Mayor.
Can we start or what is it up?
Yeah.
Calls me in order the mayor recognizes the manager of the floor is leisure.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Since we're starting, it's my understanding that at this meeting, we don't have to be recognized as just a discussion, right? I mean, this is not a formal meeting like council meeting where we have to have permission to speak or anything, right? It's just a presentation and then we can ask questions.
That's the way the retreats have always been.
Okay.
So they're kind of freewheeling and we can take advantage of, you know, the dialogue and the discussion so we can get.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're on the same page so that everyone understands. Perfect.
So that's a deviation from the city code, so everyone knows.
Deviation from what?
The city code. The city code says that any meeting needs to be chaired, like a meeting. So.
Okay.
The purpose of it is to allow for everyone to have equal voice and access. We can go lighter and that's fine, but just so everyone knows that if we don't have some type of format, then, or follow standard format, then there is no exception in city code for how a meeting is chaired and operated. At this point, I will be deferring the floor to the manager, which means that he will run the meeting more casual. But if there are dominated voices that are suppressing the non-dominated voices, we will tighten this up. Manager of the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, as promised, we wanted to give you a snapshot view of where we are financially, at least where we think we're going to be financially as a result of the COVID-19 challenges that we are facing right now. Every business is going through this kind of review and we thought it was important that we give you our business perspective. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Manning, who has done, I think, an exceptional job of pulling together an analysis, a preliminary analysis, analysis of where we are primarily on the revenue side. We're going to obviously have to pivot to start talking about expenditures once you have an idea of where we are standing with our revenues. And Mark's going to not only tell you where we are by category, but also how we intend to monitor what we're doing going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
Well, good morning, Mayor, members of the city council. First of all, I hope that you're all doing well and hope your families are doing well. As the manager said today, my task today is to try to give you an impact of, or give you an estimate of what we believe the impact of the COVID-19 virus will be on city finances. I've got to tell you, this is an extremely challenging assignment because we have a lot of unknowns. We're really sailing in uncharted waters right now. What we do know is, we know and we've studied what our revenue, what our revenues tend to do in downturns. And I think we've talked about that in past workshops and retreats, and I'll have some graphics that'll show you that. So we know what usually happens to our revenues. What we don't know now is what the severity of this crisis is going to be and what the duration is going to be. Again, in a normal recession, we'd kind of have a pretty good idea of the duration too. But those are what concern me the most is trying to estimate the severity and the duration. As the manager said, we're focused primarily on the revenue side today. We do believe there'll be an expenditure impact. We also believe that there's the opportunity for federal support, for federal support. But those two things are a little less clear right now and we're going to focus more on the revenue side today. So if I was doing this presentation about three months ago, I would have told you that we're still in the slow and steady growth phase and we have the 2020 budget based on relatively conservative assumptions and that we're looking relatively good going into 2020. That would have been the view about three months ago. I would have told you that GDP growth was again, two, two and a half, three percent and unemployment claims were low. Unemployment claims, by the way, is probably the best thing to look at as an early warning sign about what's going on in the economy. So what's our current environment? Well, as of March 28th, the unemployment claims in the United States on a weekly basis, new claims for that week were 5.8 million. I'll give you a little perspective on that in a second with a chart. Estimated second quarter GDP gross domestic product. Again, we won't know that for quite some time because that'll be the period of April through June. But a lot of the pundits are predicting that that could be a 10 to 25% decrease, which again would be unprecedented in our history. And again, I'll show you a graphic on that in a minute. And I will point out that we've attended a lot of webinars, we've talked to a lot of industry people that we deal with on a routine basis. And I've tried to assimilate some of that knowledge that we've gained from those people in some of the comments I'm making today. So let's look at weekly unemployment claims. You've probably seen this chart because it's been in the media before. This is from the St. Louis Fed. This, it's kind of hard to see, but this line over here on the right-hand side of the chart is the March 28th unemployment claims line, new unemployment claims. You can see that, I mean, they had to really adjust the scale to make that line fit on the chart. What you can't see is there's a line right here that's about 3 million. That was the week before. So in other words, there's been 10 million new claims in the last two weeks. If you look at the Great Financial Recession, which is right here, we were getting up to 600, 700,000 claims a week. And, you know, that was during the Great Financial Crisis. So in other words, very unprecedented time. Here's a GDP chart. This is just showing each quarter over the quarter a year ago, and it's a pretty busy chart. But the takeaway is from the last recession to now, the line's been a little choppy, but it's generally in the two and a half percent range. Again, relatively slow and steady GDP growth. You can see during the Great Financial Crisis, second quarter of '09 was down 4%. That was the deepest decrease, quarterly decrease, was down 4%. Again, we'll see, but a lot of people are projecting that second quarter of 2020 could be down 10 to 25%. And again, which would be off the chart, literally. So that's the national environment that we're dealing with. We want to kind of take that back to a local focus. First, I'd point out that the.
I apologize for interrupting, but in the, in the scope of the whole global situation, that, that 10 to 25% in a normal situation obviously would be devastating. Will that be softened because the whole world is going through the same issues?
I think the, I think the question probably is, I don't think there's any question that we're going to have that much of a decrease. I guess the question to me is how fast are we going to bounce back? Is the third quarter going to be back to normal or is the third quarter going to be down 5, 10%? The stimulus obviously will help that too because those that are economists would know this better than I, but I think government spending is a portion of GDP, so to the extent that the stimulus is included, that could mute that decrease in GDP as well. But without going into specifics, the point I would leave you with is we are in a totally unprecedented time.
Sure. Okay. I apologize for the interruption.
No, no problem. I'll try to look up more.
No, you're fine.
I got kind of focused there for a second. So the impact on cities will not be uniform across the country. Moody's did a really good report on this here that was in the media a while back and focused on states particularly. And I think Jeremy Hill actually talked about this a couple of days ago from Wichita State. But some of the factors that make the impact different on cities are reserve levels. Reserve levels are important. We're fortunate. I think our general fund has reserved about 15% of expenditures. I believe it's 35, 36 million. That'll be a benefit to us now. Diversification of revenues is going to be important. That's been a focal point of the city financial policy for quite some time. Another thing that will be beneficial to City Wichita is those cities that are heavily sales tax dependent are really going to struggle. We do have a portion of the countywide sales tax, but we're not nearly as concentrated on sales taxes a lot of other cities. And ironically, our lack of diversification is around the property tax, which is actually probably going to be a good thing in this because the impact on the property taxes, I'll talk about a little bit, should be relatively muted and certainly will be lagging. So that's beneficial for us. Finally, the cities that will be hit the hardest are generally those that have a service sector that's very large, particularly a service sector related to the travel and tourism industry. Think Las Vegas, Nevada, for example. We do have some exposure to that industry primarily through our aircraft manufacturing. But having said that, we are, we're in Las Vegas, which is obvious. But, so we should have a muted amount of exposure to the service sector and to the travel and tourism industry. So those are all good things, I guess, if you want to look at it that way, that should make the impact on the city Wichita not as severe as it might be in other cities. I'd also point out that the county, I'm sure will be doing something similar to what we're doing. I've contacted them a little bit and visited with them a little bit in the past, although not recently. But they are more property tax dependent on us, or more property tax dependent than us, which will actually be a benefit to them. So wouldn't surprise me if their estimate of the impact on them is a little bit less than us. And if it is, that's probably because of their property tax dependence, which again will be a good thing in this, in this atmosphere. So I want to talk about our city budget just a little bit. This will be a bit of a refresher, maybe a, you know, things we've talked about in the past. But this is our city budget, roughly $600 million. And I've broken it out by fund. Reason I did that was because I'm going to focus most of my time this morning on the general fund. But we will talk about the other funds. So just very briefly, we'll start at the bottom. Enterprise funds is about 200 million of our city budget. Think of the water and sewer fund. That's our primary utility fund. I'll give you a little preview of what I'll talk about. Water and sewer funds should come out of this relatively unscathed, we think, for a variety of reasons, but it shouldn't have much of an impact on them, we believe.
Mark, can I ask you a quick question about that? That was a question that I was wondering is, you know, especially now with the spirit layoffs and whatever. I mean, we're going to see some impact, right, just because so much manufacturing, hospitality. I mean, people aren't just using as much water and sewer and in a commercial way. I mean, everybody's at home, but that's a different expense.
Yeah.
But will the residential be enough to offset it?
I appreciate the correction. Maybe unscathed wasn't the best word. It will be not as severe as in other areas.
Okay.
Unstable is the word of the day.
Yeah.
But I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. Transit and airport, two other utility funds, which we think will be impacted. The good news here is we think that there'll be some federal support to offset those impacts. Probably the utility fund or enterprise fund that is by far at the greatest risk is the Gulf Fund. We've talked about the challenges there frequently in the past. They are in critical condition is probably the best way I can put it right now. They will suffer significantly through this. Special revenue funds, 60 million on net basis. Really, the transit guest tax fund is where we'll focus our energy there. They will have an impact, we believe. Debt service fund, debt service fund is property tax reliant, which again mitigates the risk there. But we do use sales tax in our debt service fund to fund projects, so there is some risk there. Debt service fund should be manageable for a variety of reasons, but there are some steps we may want to take to mitigate any risk to debt service fund. So with that, I'm going to focus on the general fund for most of the next few slides. Couple of takeaways. General fund is 75% salaries and benefits. So put that factoid away for later because that's very important when we talk about strategic adjustments that may be appropriate once we know more about the severity and duration of this crisis. Another thing I would tell you about the general fund is that about 56 or 57% of the general fund is spent on police and fire. In other words, that is by far our largest general fund expenditure. And if you want to add public works and parks who do a lot of our maintenance activities, you're getting close to 80%. In other words, 80% of our general fund is for those four areas. So again, sometimes that can be relevant when we talk about strategic adjustments. So let's drill down on general fund revenues. This pie chart again is from our adopted budget. I'm going to break it down into three categories. The first thing I'm going to talk about is the two slices here that the impact should be relatively muted on. And fortunately, that is two of the largest slices, which is property tax and franchise fees. Again, we will have an impact on franchise fees, no doubt, but we believe it'll be relatively muted. And again, property tax shouldn't be that significant and property tax lags significantly. So if we do have a property tax impact, it'll be months or even years down the road. So what are the two slices that'll be hit the worst? The sales tax slice and the other sources slice, components of this. This is going to include things like rental income, fees for services, for park programs, revenue collected at Century 2, interest income, court fines. All of those are going to be impacted, we believe, and all of those are in the other source category. And then finally, these little slices over here, yeah, those will be impacted, hopefully not too significantly. So again, we have two slices, hopefully not much of an impact. Two smaller slices that'll have a moderate impact and two relatively big slices where we'll focus most of our time this morning because that's where the most of the impact will be, we believe. So it's kind of redundant. Rents, fees, court fines, those all have an immediate impact. And in fact, we've looked at March revenues. We haven't closed the month of March yet, but we can already see the impact, particularly on the recreation side, in our, in our fees and collections in March. So that impact will be immediate, we believe. Sales tax, as you know, we do not have a sales tax. We receive a portion of countywide sales tax. But the sales tax is completely administered and collected by the state of Kansas. And unfortunately for this exercise, it's on a two-month lag. So we really will not know the impact of this on sales tax, and we believe there will be an impact. But we will not actually know that until June. We'll get a little indication in May. May will report sales tax activity through March, March 25th. But we, we, we won't get a whole lot of information there until May and even more in June. And finally, property tax is significantly lagging. The valuation for 2020 will be estimated by the county in June. And that's based on valuation work that they've been doing since January. So there's probably not much of a chance that it will impact 2021's valuation. If it does impact valuation, most likely that's going to be for 2022, which is what, you know, 20 months down the road. Now, our, our risk on property tax will be delinquencies. We'll go into that in a second. So you, if you remember, you would have seen this chart about a year ago when we talked about revenues. This just plots the sales tax and sales tax is going to grow 3% a year if you, if you did the average over the time period. But we know sales tax is economically sensitive, so I put little arrows there where the downturns typically are. Usually what happens is we go into a downturn, we have a year or two of either stagnant or declining sales tax revenue. That's typically what happens. So using that past experience, that's what we would expect to happen now. Again, we don't know the severity, but we know the pattern. Sales tax is about 12% of the general fund. It's also a significant source for the CIP, as I noted. Very economically sensitive. We expect the loss to be as much as $2 million in the current year. Again, two-month lag, so our first indication will be on May 25th. Our better indication will be on June 25th. The state distributes to us on the 25th. Again, could impact the CIP. We use sales tax for roads and freeways and bridges. It could impact our, our stream there and maybe some of those projects. This is interest earnings. Interest earnings, as you can see, are very heavily tied to the economy, primarily because Federal Reserve monetary policy is tied to the economy. You can see what happened in the Great Financial Crisis. Interest earnings went to zero effectively for three years. Not a good period for interest earnings. Since then, you know, the Fed raised rates, things were going pretty good for us. Our interest earnings were relatively high. And you may recall, last year in the budget process, that was a significant source of additional income for us. Based on federal monetary policy, we know that interest rates are going to decrease again. The Fed's cut rates basically to zero. And it won't be an immediate impact because of the way our portfolio is structured. But we know as investments mature, we're not going to be able to reinvest them at the rate for which they're currently invested. You know, our portfolio varies, but, you know, we were buying stuff at two and a half percent, 2%, six months, eight months, a year ago. We can't reinvest it to two and a half percent today. So we will have a significant hit on interest earnings. We estimate that at about $2 million in 2020. And I would go so far as to say in 2021, we'll probably lose another two or two and a half million dollars, regardless of what happens on the crisis, because the information I'm seeing is that the Federal Reserve will probably keep rates zero for quite an extended period of time. So we'll be back to the Great Financial Crisis period for interest earnings, probably would be my, my estimation. Talking about fees and rental income, that's about 8% of the general fund. These are economically sensitive typically. People tend to spend more money on programs that we offer when times are better. These are things like Cowtown, city arts classes, recreation classes, Summer of Discovery, Century 2, things of that nature. So think of things like that. Again, obviously a lot of those facilities are shut down right now, so there will be a immediate impact, obviously. The big question is, when do we recover? Do we recover in a month or two? Do we recover in three or four months or do we recover in 12 months? That's the answer. I don't know. But we will definitely have an impact there. I'd point out that we should see some expenditure offset here. A lot of those programs, particularly in park, are, are, are provided through part-time seasonal staff. So obviously if we don't have the activity, I would assume that we would not have the expenditures on the staffing side. But those will nowhere near offset the 2.8 in revenue that we would expect to lose. I'll try to take a few more pause points periodically so I can make sure I catch any questions as we go. Court fines. So municipal court's been closed, right? In theory, that should not impact our court fines because in theory, those defendants will just pay their fines once court is reopened because my understanding is the cases were continued. Sometimes payment of court fines is kind of on an opportunity basis, so we do believe that there will be some impact from the court shutdown on our court revenues. Probably a greater risk to court revenues is enforcement activity by the police department. And I would guess that enforcement activity is probably going to be diminished during this period of time. For one thing, there are less vehicles on the road for those of us that do have to get out. So it's, I think it's pretty logical that there will be an impact on court revenues. We've estimated a little over $1 million. And I say immediate and accelerate, you know, court fines, if we take an enforcement action today, we may not receive that revenue for six weeks as it's adjudicated through the process. So that's why there'll be a lag on the impact on court fines as well. So franchise fee is a huge part of our general fund revenues. It's about 20%. A lot of that is West Star or Effigy, I should say. Effigy, as you know, has, has waived late fees and for some of their customers, which is a very humanitarian gesture that will impact their gross revenues, which will impact our franchise fees. And we don't know how much. We don't know how many people take advantage of that, but it will result in lower franchise fees for us, at least initially, as, as people choose to defer. In theory, we should collect that money later as people are able to pay it, but it will have an immediate impact. Now, to your question, Councilmember Tuttle, the, the risk to franchise fees is reduced economic activity. There's no doubt about that. Another risk is delinquencies if people are not able to pay their utility bills. So those are definitely risks. But generally speaking, franchise fees don't have a whole lot of economic sensitivity. If you go back through, through our past collections, in fact, as we've noted, franchise fees are significantly more impacted by the weather than anything. And so the weather shouldn't, you know, be, be affected that's impacted by the crisis. Let's talk about property tax. Property tax is driven by assessed valuation. So what happens during recessions with assessed valuation, it tends to flatten out. It usually doesn't decrease, but it tends to flatten out. This chart has a big scale, so it's kind of hard to see, but you can obviously see the impact during the Great Financial Crisis when it was flat. In fact, in fact, it was flat for four years, which was unprecedented. But you can see little, it's hard, but you can see little dips about 2003 and you can see a little dip here in 91, 92, somewhere in that timeframe in the head recession. So we know the property valuation will probably suffer if there is a prolonged economic downturn. If it's short-term, may not have an impact at all. But we also know that if it does have an impact, it'll lag significantly in the consequence to the general fund. Property tax is about 35% of our general fund, so it's a very important revenue stream for us. It's also an important stream for the debt service fund. Again, there is some economic sensitivity in delinquencies. We've been very fortunate and our delinquencies have been relatively low for the last three or four years. I would expect that to increase. Our next property tax payment that we will receive is in June, which we received from the county. Wouldn't surprise me if we see some impact from increased delinquencies in that payment. I don't know that it would be that significant, but, you know, we've, we're estimating $200,000, which is relatively insignificant in the amount of property tax we receive. December will be.
Can I ask you a question right there on the property taxes? Um, do we have a, you know, you've seen other states, it seems like they're sliding things. What if that did slide 60 to 90 days? What would that do to us?
What if we extended the payment term?
What, what if the property, what if there is a proposal to extend that? How do you see that affecting us?
Well, it would mainly impact us on the cash flow basis because we wouldn't have the cash flow for 90 days. But as far as on a revenue standpoint, if, if we ultimately received the amount that was supposed to be distributed to us, it would have relatively.
Okay.
insignificant impact on us overall, but again, we'd have to manage our cash flow around that.
So there have been a, let the council member ask you a question.
Yeah.
There has been a concern about the, the new evaluations of taxes before COVID hit our community. The argument over on the county side was that, that the economy is growing and that's why taxes increased this year. Obviously, that has changed. Is there any word over about, on the county side, possible reappraisals that would throw?
Isn't it the state that does it?
That would throw the projections that you're referring to off?
Yeah, that's a, a good question, but there, and I'm not an expert on the county appraisal process, believe me. But there is a incredibly long lead time on the appraisal process. In fact, I think it was mostly completed for 2021 in April when they mailed out the notifications to taxpayers. I think it was, well, actually it was March, I guess. I'm losing track of time, sorry. It was March, a couple, three weeks ago is when I received mine, for example. What that means is that they are pretty much locked in with their preliminary evaluation for 2021. And really, the primary change from there is just going to be on the appeal process. Now, how appeals turn out based on what has happened since then, you know, is not for me to say. And I can certainly see why appeals could be viewed more differently, given our current situation. But again, that's, that's on the county appraiser.
But that would change the, the formula which your base is.
It certainly could. Again, they're going to give us a preliminary estimate in June, but they won't give us the final numbers until November. Appraisals will vary based on, based on appeals, and again, that's something the county takes care of. Now, I'll be honest, I don't think it'll have that significant of an impact at this point. Now, next year, for 2022, it could have a huge impact.
Thank you.
So again, long lead time, and again, this could impact our CIP. So the next couple are just the other little slices where I said that the impact should be moderate. Motor vehicle is based on the number of vehicles and the value of those vehicles. So if there's a slowdown and residents don't replace their vehicles as soon as they would have, then we'll likely see an impact for motor vehicle. We typically do. It's typically not extreme, but I would expect to see a dip or a drop in motor vehicle tax. Again, we've estimated that at about $700,000. We get motor vehicle about every quarter, so we'll see some money in June. Probably won't see much of an impact there. Probably won't know on this one until September, most likely. Now, the gas tax is super interesting if you're into analyzing trends, which maybe not all of us are, but I find it interesting. The gas tax, as you know, has been flat for about 20 years, the amount of revenue we've collected. It's based on the number of gallons sold, not the price of gasoline, but the number of gallons sold. Well, over the last 20 years, this is another example of our revenue portfolio where technology has impacted our revenues. Cars are much more efficient, so consumption has basically have been flat for 20 years, which means our gas tax revenues have been flat for about 20 years. But having said that, they tend to go down when the price of gas goes up and they tend to go up when the price of gas goes down. We're at historic levels on the price of gas. You can buy a gallon of gas in Wichita for $1.45 now, which means that we would expect ordinarily for gas tax revenues to be increasing. But as we know, there are very few cars on the road, so consumption is down, so. The net result of all that is we do expect to see some decrease in gas tax. Probably, probably more in the first distribution. We would expect this to moderate as more people get out and around, particularly with the price of gas low. But we could see a decrease there of about $450,000, we believe. Finally, license and permits. That should be impacted by the economy. If there's less applications for new licenses, obviously that'll decrease our revenue flows. But again, that's, that's a difficult one for us to impact. The order of magnitude is relatively small. So if you're, if you're counting along here, I made a little summary here of where we're at. Again, our best estimate at this point would be eight to 10 million dollars in 2020. That's a, there's going to be a wide degree of variance. I've summarized it here. Sales tax, we're relatively confident about. Interest earnings, I'm almost certain that we're going to lose $2 million in interest earnings. Fees and rents, again, there's some variability there based on the severity and duration. And everything else, gas tax, motor vehicle tax, franchise fees, again, I think there'll be a lot of variation there, but there's certainly the potential that we could have a $3 million loss in that area.
Mark, I think this would be a good pause point. Any questions about any of the revenue categories or the cumulative?
Yeah, I have a question, Mark. Looking back at the court fines, are the projected revenues based on assessed fines or the additional late fees?
We did not include any additional late fees in our, in our estimate, no. So it's just based on lower, lower judicial assessments and lower enforcement activity, which we assume will occur.
Okay. Question and comment, I guess, for all of us to think about. So I've seen really good turnout when we do amnesty days. Would it? I think it would be beneficial if we did that anyway as we begin recovery from this. One, to help people get some of those fines taken care of. But amnesty brings out a lot of folks who have additional fines who may not have paid anyway. So that could be a way to recoup some additional of the lost cost, as well as help people by having an amnesty opportunity coming in.
Just to follow up to your question, are you referring to amnesty on taxes or on fines for
On the court fines, like if you've got a parking ticket or speeding ticket didn't get taken care of. I'm guilty of that a couple of times. Coming in, we'd recover the initial ticket price, but the fees would be waived. Or the additional fines would be waived for like late payment and stuff. So that would get a lot of folks in to take care of it, one. Two, as people are trying to recover financially, it may help out too.
So just, there's, it's likely we're going to a pressure to waive court, court late fees anyways. So this might be an opportunity, if we move in that direction, to not just have people pay their current fees, but also people who are taking advantage of the amnesty. And I will just add that when we were in a budget crisis and the legislature, the tax penalty amnesty at that time was projected to bring in, I think, 500 million, I think. So it's, it's something that the state has used before, and if we use kind of a version of it, there might be some, some value to that.
Just a reminder that ultimately, this is decided by Judge Jones. And, but Will, she's, she's been open to it before. She doesn't, you know, these are exceptional circumstances. She doesn't like to have amisties very often, otherwise people tend to rely on that and then don't make payments. But you're right, this is a very different set of circumstances, and we'd have to do some analysis on what we think we could get in if we did that. And then it's the issue of the consequences, right? What is it that we're waiving? And so it's more than just the money, it's also the outstanding charges. So we'll, but Will, I'm not opposed at all to working with Judge Jones and starting that discussion.
And just for clarification, because that was the arguments against it, you know, in the legislature as well, is will you incentivize people to not pay and wait for the next amnesty? Just with your own institutional knowledge, when was the last time there was this type of amnesty? Next question could be for the manager or for the conferee.
Yeah, I think it was about, no, I think it was a little longer than that. I think it was three or four years ago.
So not that long ago?
It wasn't that long, no, no. But I would tell you, in a perfect world, if we hadn't had COVID-19, we have been working with advocates outside, the building advocates for defendants, with Judge Jones on a model that's actually been done, followed in Durham, North Carolina, that put advocates in place to better explain, to bet, I guess, better represent folks who aren't currently represented, so that they understand the right plea, they understand the consequences of not paying their fines and not going to court. And they've, in Durham, they've had great success in terms of having a drop in outstanding fines and fees, but more importantly, a drop in the number of folks with suspended licenses. We were hoping to move in that direction towards the Durham model. That's going to take some time, and in this case, we may have to look at amnesty as a standalone and understand those, that structural institutional change could still come to you later for consideration.
Well, my curiosity is too, how many of these, and these are really low, low end offenses, but how many of these ended up, end up in one or two days, three days in jail? And, you know, jail fees that could be saved as well, you know, for that? I mean, there's savings all over the place.
Yeah, we've taken a lot of steps to try to minimize the jail time.
Sure. So our best opportunity to recapture any of this revenue is going to be in the sales tax and the fees and rents, because interest earnings, we have no control over. And the other revenues are pretty much limited because it's property tax and some of those other things. So the opportunity to capture some of this, the opportunity is going to be in the sales tax revenue and these rents and fees. So we're only looking at maybe, even if we got all of that, it's still only half.
I would agree generally with what you said. I mean, if I want to paint you a really nice picture, I would tell you that, yeah, if sales tax will drop, everybody will defer purchases, this will be over, and everybody will rush out and spend all the money they didn't spend, will bounce back, and everything will be okay. I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but certainly that's a possibility.
Right.
But
Well, that whole idea of that issue of internet sales becomes really important now.
Absolutely.
But you are also totally correct in that if nothing else happens, unless the Federal Reserve changes their monetary policy, we're going to lose $2 million in interest this year and most likely next year as well.
And same with some of the other revenue things, like the gas tax and property tax. We're not going to realize any of that immediately either, so. Franchise fees, we could get some if it's a really hot summer and people are using electricity a lot, but that's not something you hang your hat on.
You know, if we see more and more spending habits moving towards the internet, and obviously they are right now, you know, we, under the old projections, it was a million dollars annually of revenue we thought we were losing.
Yeah.
Could be more now, yeah.
But we can't, that's a legislative function.
Right.
There's not the
Yep.
Right, but it's been part of our legislative platform.
But we, that's it.
And again, they're supposed to come back on the 27th, right? So.
So legally, it's just, even if you had a public vote, we need a public vote to increase sales tax. We couldn't have a public vote for internet tax though, because that's just off the table until the legislature puts it on the table.
Yeah, legislature has to put that on the
So we couldn't even
And it's really just a collection of it.
That's not, okay, because
Not a new tax.
That doesn't fall into home rule then, like there's no, okay.
It would, at one time earlier this session, there was discussion about the trade off is they would allow for this collection, but then they would exempt groceries, right?
Right.
So it's, I just don't know that they've put the number of votes together in order to get there.
Well, it's something to discuss with you.
And we are totally, the state totally administers the sales tax and collects it, so we are totally at the state's mercy in that regard. And Councilmember, finally, let me have one more comment to what you said, because the real concern to me is what's, what's our base look like a year from now, which is basically what you were saying, and that's the part that we don't know. Does our base return to the trend line? Or does our base permanently get reduced, which is a much more serious problem? We don't know the answer to that right now, and that's kind of worrisome.
So, Mark, I have another question, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you consider these projections that you've made conservative? Or, or are they just, this is just absolutely what we think is going to, I mean, projections are projections, right?
Yeah, excellent question, I meant to say that. Really, there's three scenarios, at least, that we've kind of evaluated. The first is the, we shut down for a month, and then everything gets better, we peak out, and we return to normal. That's kind of maybe the best case. And in our preliminary, preliminary modeling on that, we think that could be a $5 million impact, just to throw out a number. The worst case is, what we talked about, is that we don't recover from this for a long time, and we have, you know, another great financial crisis, maybe an 18 or 36 month recession, who knows? But that's obviously a very dark picture, but that's probably the worst case. And in that case, what I'm showing you today is just the beginning. And then we'd need to talk about 2021, 2022. We have done some preliminary modeling on that, not really prepared to share it today, but that's obviously not a, not a good place for us to be.
Lots more than 10 million.
Yes.
Okay.
Because then you start getting into property tax. What I would tell you, that's the long story to answer your question, ma'am, and I apologize for that. But I would say this is the, maybe the middle of the road. This is kind of assuming a, maybe a 90 or 120 day hit, and maybe we start to recover sometime towards the fall. You know, the numbers behind this are, we've looked at it on a monthly basis. We've modeled what we would expect on months, based on our distribution calendars and based on what we think, so. Yeah, I would characterize this as the moderate version, which, again, what worries me is I don't know if the moderate version is the right version.
Yeah, I know.
So the moderate version is eight to 10 million hit that we have to figure out for this fiscal year?
Yes, sir. And whether some of that could linger into 2021, even in the best case, maybe, maybe not. So let's flip over to the expenditures. I won't spend near as much time on expenditures, because it's a lot more fluid. But we should see some expenditures decrease, again, as I mentioned earlier, tied primarily to areas in which we collect revenues. You know, to put a number on it, maybe half a million dollars, that'll be a lot of parked seasonal staff, things of that nature. Obviously, we could expect to see public, public safety expenditures increase. We have implemented measures to slow down non-public safety hiring. You know, the amount of money we'll save there is going to be dependent on turnover, obviously. But I think $100,000 a month is probably not unreasonable, and obviously, that'll increase and compound as we go into this, the longer that we extend the slowdown on hiring. So there will be some impacts on expenditures, but you don't have to be a mathematician to figure out that those numbers on this slide don't total eight to 10 million to offset the expenditure revenue side.
So what are, what kind of the public safety expenditures are you seeing increase? What's the rationale behind that? What, what's going to increase there? Just more arrests or more criminal activity? And we've seen a little bit of spike in some areas, but we've seen others that have decreased too.
We haven't seen any yet. We monitor things like that, as I'll get to in a little bit.
Okay.
But we were just expecting increased police presence, you know, depending on how this goes primarily. We don't know what the impact's going to be on fire as far as responses. My understanding, actually, is fire responses are actually down a little bit initially, as all the EMS is handling most of the responses. But we don't know exactly what this could mean to our fire department in terms of responses, which could drive some overtime there, so.
If, if I can, so we know we're going to have some on PPE and other equipment that's necessary to protect our folks, right?
Got it.
So, but that's not going to be real significant. Maybe the better way to look at this is their expenditures relative to the rest of the budget. Because we not only are going to protect the existing staffing levels, but we are, as part of the hiring freeze, we will not slow down rank and file hiring in police and fire. So unless we're, unless that's part of a budget solution later on.
The bigger budget percentage.
Exactly, so you're going to, yeah. So as a percentage of the budget, it will probably increase, police and fire expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
So let's talk about federal, federal support. And again, if we rely on our historical knowledge, we know what happens in federally declared disasters. But again, this is kind of uncharted waters, maybe different than the disasters that we've dealt with in the past. We're coordinating with Sedgwick County on any federal support. We know typically they cover overtime and equipment and direct costs related to the disaster. So we don't know exactly what that's going to look like this time, but that's why the action you took this morning was so important, because we want to make sure that we can categorize and track all those expenditures so that they are in fact eligible for reimbursement. We've got that in covered. I will point out that in the past FEMA support, we do everything we can to maximize FEMA support. We've been very successful in doing that. But we do typically have a portion of any disaster that is not mitigated by federal support on the expenditure side that we have to pick up in the general fund typically.
Yeah, and Mark, just to clarify, or just make sure, to underline a point that you made, this will, FEMA will not help us on the revenue side. So the nine to, nine to 10 million dollar problem we have, FEMA will not backfill any of that. So what we have to hope for is what Mark's going to talk about going on in terms of other federal support.
A few other areas of federal support that we're aware of. We believe there'll be extra CDBG and CSBG grant support, which will be beneficial to housing and community services. The Department of Justice burn grant funding, we believe, will be opened up, which will help police for their expenditures, particularly equipment, things of that nature. Probably most importantly, in terms of magnitude, I think the CARES Act included money for FTA and FAA. That's money that'll flow to transit and airport. I mentioned earlier when we talked about utility funds, that those two would have an impact. Transit, my understanding is FTA will probably make available somewhere near about $14 million, which will be good for them. FAA on airport, my understanding is the figure's about $9 million is what our allocation will be, which will certainly be beneficial to them. I think airport probably still has a little bit of risk, depending on the duration, but certainly they'll be insulated at least from any initial impact with those, with that federal support. By the way, we're getting closer to the end, and the speed should accelerate a little bit for, if I've been a little too long-winded so far, I apologize. So we'll move into some other funds, and then we'll talk about what we can think about doing going forward. So let's talk about debt service fund. Primary revenues are property tax and special assessments. We do expect greater delinquencies there. We could see some impact on the sales tax. As you recall, half the sales tax goes into the debt service fund, half goes to the general fund. So we do expect some impact on the debt service fund. So what does that mean? It does not mean, in my opinion, that we will be at any risk of not making our debt payments. You may recall that our debt payments, in terms of property tax, are somewhere around 45% of our property tax revenue. In other words, we have a huge margin of safety there. So that's not the concern. But what is the concern is if revenues to the debt service fund decrease and our project expenditures continue at the current pace, in order to fund those, we will have a lesser ability to fund those with cash, which means that we will increase our debt load to fund those capital project expenditures. Again, if this is a two or three or four month thing, will that be material? Probably not. But if it's a longer term thing, will that be an issue and challenge for us? It, it'll increase our debt levels, I guess, is what I'm saying, whether or not that's acceptable or not, something that we may want to consider. The way to mitigate that would obviously be to not initiate any additional projects for some period of time and/or to slow down on projects which are not yet began, maybe initiated by the council, but we haven't actually begun doing anything yet, maybe something to consider. Transit guest tax, again, we would expect a significant drop in this one. The problem is, yes, sir.
Sorry, Mark, while you're backing up on that. So you're saying any existing projects that we've already started? So we're looking at anything in the next two, three months that we would anticipate starting?
We're, that's, if I can, that's going to be the topic of your next retreat.
Okay.
The CIP committee is looking at projects that were in the pipeline for 1920, and then also 21 and 22. And we're going to bring some thoughts to you at the next retreat, and then have you engage almost on a project by project analysis to give us some guidance.
Okay.
We're temporarily freezing projects in the pipeline. If they're out for bid, we're going to go ahead and finish that, right? That makes sense. But anything that hasn't been out to bid, we're going to temporarily freeze until you've had that discussion and given us guidance.
When is that retreat?
We haven't said it yet, because we're trying to make sure that we can staff you the right way, right? So they had a pretty good session yesterday. I have a preliminary list on my desk. We're, they probably need at least one more meeting to be able to kind of finalize their thoughts before I'm comfortable bringing them to you.
So sometime in April?
Yes, I'm still hoping to do it in April.
Thank you.
So again, we would expect an increase in transient guest tax fund revenues. We know that they're economically sensitive. You know, we know we take a hit when we have a recession. The, the problem with this revenue stream is it's provided to us from the state on a quarterly basis, so we won't get our next distribution until July, which will be for April, May, and June. I would expect a significant decrease in our July distribution. We'll get a little bit of a clue, we collect the T-bid, not the state. Now, the, the base is not the same for the T-bid as it is for the transient guest tax, but we probably will have a little bit of an indication or clue in May, when we collect the April T-bid, but we won't know for sure until July. But as you know, the primary expenditure from the transient guest tax fund is our contract with Visit Wichita, in which we pay them monthly amounts. So one option there to reduce our cash flow, at least temporarily, maybe to revisit that relationship with them and see if there's any flexibility to modify the terms of that contract. Okay, our golf fund, I kind of ruined the surprise earlier, I guess, but the golf fund is in critical condition. We, we ended March with, again, we haven't closed March, but our cash balance at the end of March was negative $200,000. I'm rounding, obviously, but somewhere in the negative $200,000 range. Based on state law, cash basis law, we are not allowed to have negative cash balances, as I'm sure you're aware also. So this is a pretty significant problem. Course closures, of course, depends on the month of the year, but March, April, we should be generating $100,000 a month or a week from our courses. We're obviously not generating that if we're closed. If this were May or June, we would probably be generating $130,000 from our courses. But March and April are beginnings of the golfing season, which we start to see significant cash flows, inflows, and obviously, we're not receiving those. So the bottom line is the golf fund is, is going to be in very bad shape when the shutdown ends, but very bad shape this year. Most likely, it's going to require some type of very significant strategic adjustment, or it's going to require a general fund subsidy, because we, you know, we can't have a negative cash balance at the end of the year.
So
Yes, sir.
Um, my understanding is that you can utilize golf courses during this time with, with adjustments. You know, one person per cart, maintain social distancing, similar to using the park. I believe it's Uh, I believe it's uh, Shawnee County just opened up their golf courses. Um, we've received emails from members of our community, uh, at least I have, I'm sure other members have here, uh, who are asking uh, for, for us to follow what the private um, golf courses are doing. Uh, and, and I'm wondering if there's been some thought to that because it seems like fiscally it would make sense to follow suit of what other uh, like cities in our state and what our private um, facilities are doing if we can maintain a, a safe, a safe environment. So has there been any discussion in that?
Yeah, a lot of discussion. And the question is whether you can maintain a safe environment similar to a playground.
Right.
Right? And that's been our issue. And I, you know, I went through with staff the recommendations or the, the suggestions that came from other folks. And I, I think the biggest concern we have is that, uh, yes, there are some golf courses and private, uh, private courses especially, I know are open. Um, but when we look at peer cities, we're finding that a lot of those cities, Tulsa, Oklahoma City, closed all their public courses. Um, and what, we had an example, uh, when we were making this decision, we were kind of on the fence. And one, one of the private clubs um, had experienced a difficulty with someone who had tested positive. And so then you had to do contact tracing for that person. So everyone that, that person came in contact with, including the staff, but other golfers as well. And the fact that, you know, and I know some of these things would be mitigated by the recommendations, but there are a number of surfaces that they come and somebody comes in contact with and we can't, we don't, we would never have a staffing uh, available to be able to clean on a regular basis several times during the day. All of the things that people could come in contact with. Um, uh, so I, it's, the golfers are a passion group and we don't, I don't like losing this kind of revenue. Um, at the same time, we have tried to control our expenses and we've, uh, most of our people on furlough that are part of the golf system, and we're just maintaining the courses right now. That's pretty much the staff that we have. The pros are not working.
And I, I think you're answering my question where, what, obviously it's a fiscal loss. So the decision to close that was ba- wasn't based on the finances. It sounds like it's a health analysis, health risk analysis, and it's not because, which we came up with a different result than Shawnee County did, which is fine, but it's not just because those happen to be the employees that are furloughed. It's not.
No, that's exactly right. Yeah, the decision was made on, from a health perspective and that's where our debate has been. Similar to what we did with our rec centers, as, as well as the playgrounds.
And Bob, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I talked to Troy, Director Houtman, about this and he also was concerned about his employees and their health and wellbeing and, you know, if we're trying to role model at the city, stay at home is golf an essential service? And so I think that also played a factor, so.
I think there are, the, one of the arguments brought up by one of the golfers, two actually, was that many of the golfers wouldn't care if we just shut the clubhouse down and everything and just allowed them to govern their own golf games, so.
Well, some, some of that's, some of that's going on right now. People, people are playing the courses for free.
Cause if, cause I asked that where like, when one of them called me, like, why don't you just, no one's there, just, why, why aren't you just going out? Cause they can walk them. Uh, Nate said that the, the holes were covered, that it was pretty much, you know, and I wasn't suggesting that, I was just asking why aren't they doing it, but it, they told me that pretty much the golf courses are, uh, y- you can't just go out and, and do that, but is that, were you saying some people are, so that might not be all?
That's the report I'm getting.
The report you're getting?
Yeah.
Okay, so some courses are actually capable of being open right now. They're just not because of the employees and.
And the, and, and think of the people that are playing, that, you know, there is an at-risk population that, you know, uses our courses, so, I don't know, it's, it was, uh, like I said, it was a hard decision, financially, really hard decision.
It seems it, yeah.
Those are being made all the time by all businesses.
And I, I just think the confusion, um, is when other municipalities, of course, you know, I think the golf community is citing the municipalities that are opening their courses and, and adjusting to maintain a safe distancing and then there are some who aren't. So I think that's probably where the miscommunication is, but.
And we started that way originally, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we reduced the number, one person per cart, we, we cut in half, I think, the number of tee times
Yeah.
in order to have the distancing.
Right, the fifteen minutes to the five minutes or whatever, yeah, okay.
Well, I think I even saw something in, you know, in all these reports we get, but about one city, like, they didn't want the holes to be open because people put their hands in there and then the next person puts their hands in there.
Right.
So even opening the holes becomes an issue.
That makes sense.
Yeah, grabs the pen.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, I'll move on to a couple of other utility funds. I've talked about these uh, pretty much already, so I'll just be very brief. But again, the, the threat to the water utility is primarily on discretionary use, which is both irrigation and whether we have any economic impact, uh, which, you know, certainly is a possibility, and then finally delinquencies. Uh, but we don't think that those will be uh, huge on the water utility. And again, airport and transit definitely are going to be impacted, but we think that federally s- uh, support will mitigate any issue there. Uh, so I apologize, I've mislabeled this. It should be revenues, not expenditures. Uh, so this is just the summary of our revenue discussion. Uh, we constantly monitor the flows, but a lot of those flows will lag the actual impact and uh, we would expect to know by late June, uh, exactly the severity of what we're dealing with, uh, for sure. And that's when we get our last sales tax, uh, for, um, for, uh, April. Again, this is just kind of the calendar in March. We'll see, we saw some degradation in fees. Franchise fees and interest earnings in April, we would expect to see some signs preliminarily, sales tax in May and then June will be, June will be interesting to me on the property tax delinquency. That's what I'm really looking forward to. I think that'll be a, a good indicator of how distressed, uh, folks are is the delinquency rate on property taxes, so. Now, if you're more graphically inclined, that's what this chart shows you, same information, but this just kind of gives you an idea of, of when our benchmarks will be for when we will e- expect to have data that'll tell us uh, clues about the severity and duration. Same information I just provided, but it kind of gives you an idea. You can see on the property tax, I've got clear out there to June twenty twenty-one. That's when we'll know the valuation for twenty twenty-two. Uh, so, you know, hopefully that's not problematic, but uh, June twenty twenty-one will be a, will, will tell us how, you know, long this is. Uh, so let's flip to the expenditure side briefly. We monitor payroll every two weeks. We look at our payroll, we see what we're spending, we compare it to what we think we should have spent, and so we get uh, indications pretty uh, directly on, on how payroll is trending. Obviously, we look at all our other expenditures, monthly, sometimes weekly, sometimes daily. Uh, we monitor all that very carefully and very closely and we look at that and compare it to our targets. And we should, we would expect to see some uh, reductions in that area as we kind of curtail expenditures to some extent. Uh, so let's talk about, uh, let's flip, maybe start talking about responses. Uh, I think there's two different categories, responses, tactical responses and strategic responses. Uh, so we'll go over some of maybe more of the short-term tactical considerations. First of all, uh, I've talked about this, first of all, the hiring freeze for non-public safety, uh, which has been implemented. Uh, we've implemented uh, furloughs for select staff, uh, but I've got three down at the bottom there are things maybe to consider. Uh, one is whether we should look at deferring any license fees or any other fees, particularly for some of our customers or in areas that are particularly hard-hit. Uh, we talked about the po- postponement of new capital projects. That might be something to consider on a tactical basis. And finally, we have a number of contracts that are scheduled to be renewed this year and there could be some challenges getting that work done, so it might be uh, of interest on a tactical basis to consider extending some of those contracts. So let's drill down a little bit on some of these. I would say on license fee deferral, first let me make the point that we uh, do not want to defer the licensing process. Uh, that process, we believe, the staff believes is important for public safety purposes, uh, so we would not want to defer the licensing process. However, uh, whether to defer fees, I think is more of a policy decision. Uh, we issue about four hundred licenses on a renewal basis per month. I mean, it's going to, it's going to vary each month and what the kind are. Uh, but generally speaking, we're going to re- uh, renew about four hundred licenses a month. Uh, that does include dog licenses where most of our activity is. Uh, you can see that some of those licenses are for areas that are suffering from the shutdown. Uh, some are in areas that we know are most likely going to be economically distressed. Uh, things like uh, restaurants or drinking establishments, for example. Uh, you know, massage therapists, uh, there's a variety of them, food truck vendors. Uh, those are areas where we are pretty sure our customers are having challenging times. Uh, again, the order of magnitude is not incredibly large, uh, but, and we would definitely not want to change the application process for renewals, uh, but again, whether or not to adjust or defer any of those fees is a, is more of a policy discussion. Uh, there are other fees that we've examined, uh, that we collect and also in areas that could be impacted uh, by the shutdown. Uh, these are things like, uh, the most obvious example is Century Two, our convention center, uh, which is shut down. Uh, we rent space in Century Two to some particular tenants. Uh, again, the order of magnitude's not all that great, uh, but that may be an area, uh, that may be uh, under consideration. Uh, we also have some parking areas where we lease parking spaces, particularly in Old Town. Uh, or we have garage, uh, relationships where we lease spaces in city garages. Uh, some of those may be in areas that, uh, our customers are impacted by the shutdown. And uh, finally, we have IRB administrative fees. I think they're twenty-five hundred bucks a year for IRB issuances. Most of those are collected in December, so the challenge there probably isn't that significant. Uh, but again, there could be businesses that have IRBs that are uh, stressed that, uh, that could be a, a challenge for them.
Um, Bob, correct me, I think we'd already talked about this, but on some of the convention center uh, events and so forth, weren't we issuing credits for those that had to cancel and that they could still use?
For the events themselves, yes. Yeah, it depends on their contract with us. But we've honored the contract which allows for either a return or an extension of that to a following year.
So we're still offering that too going forward or?
It's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, we've talked about this, uh, the manager talked about this, so I won't go into great detail here, but there are projects in the twenty twenty adopted CIP that have not yet been initiated and that's relatively common. I mean, as we know, the timing of CIP projects can be relatively fluid. Uh, but there may be some opportunities to examine those projects that have not yet been presented for initiation and to review the timeline of those. Uh, we have a variety of contracts, just like any other year. Contracts get renewed on uh, certain intervals. Uh, a lot of times we'll have a contract with extensions, but we also have contracts for which we no longer have any extensions. Do not have any extensions, excuse me. Uh, the challenge there is, as you can imagine, there's things that are, are a challenge for staff to accomplish right now with our staffing levels and with our remote working and with things of that nature. It's a challenge for our vendors in a lot of cases to do business with us in certain areas. The proposal process for contracts can be very people-intensive, I'll put it that way. Uh, a lot of meetings, it's a long timeframe. Uh, could be a challenge to accomplish all of those using our normal process. Uh, that's not uncommon. We occasionally will do that for unique circumstances and it's within the uh, ability of the city council to extend those contracts. Again, we've done that occasionally in the past, uh, but all I point out to you today is that may be a tactical option to extend certain contracts, uh, rather than go through the proposal process if, if we don't have the ability to do that.
So Bob gave us a list of some of these. Uh, I, I can imagine which ones are the largest, but could you maybe give us the top three?
Yeah.
In terms of value of the contracts?
In terms of the value or the amount of work involved, I mean, the banking one is the, is extremely.
That looks to be the most labor-intensive, is that the most?
Yeah, right. It's, it's a pretty significant uh, contract, yeah. I can't, I don't, I have a, I don't have a dollar value on it.
But just in terms of it's probably one of the top three?
Yeah.
What are the other couple of ones that would be?
Uh, the audit.
The audit one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Those would be the two largest I can think of markets. There are another one.
Outsource printing?
Yeah, outsourced printing is kind of a benign topic, but that's actually relatively complicated because there's a lot of people that have their fingers in that pie, if you can imagine. Uh, I mean, you know, in, in terms of criticality, that may not be the most critical, but it is incredibly labor-intensive and a challenge. But the manager's right, the banking services and the audit services are two that are incredibly complicated.
And, and both of those have at least a one-year renewal option?
Uh, yes, neither one of those have any more options.
Neither one have any more options?
Right, so we'd have to, uh, council would have to approve extensions.
Would have to do new actions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Out of options on those.
So that brings us to this discussion, right? Um, you've got Marcus prepared, um, sheets for each of these license and uh, rents and other fees and then also the expiring contracts. Maybe this, maybe this is the time to, to talk through those so we can get some guidance from you, uh, starting with the licenses.
So it looked like about maybe forty thousand dollars a month?
That's unlicensed.
Unlicensed, that's what it kind of totaled up to? Is that about right?
Yeah, if you include garage sales, which I'm not sure whether you want to include garage sales or not, but, you know, somewhere.
Well, I, I had this thought this weekend. I think you're going to see, and no pun intended, well, yeah, there is, a surge in garage sales. Um, people are, I mean, they're de- they're at home, they're decluttering, they're figuring out, you know, how to organize and they're going to need extra revenue. I think you're going to see a lot of uh, garage sales coming forward. There may be an opportunity to show some forgiveness or.
If you're watching social media or the blogs, they're talking about it a lot.
Might be a way to, I mean, we wouldn't capture any revenue on it, but it'd be a, maybe a uh, month of May, no garage sale permits. I don't know.
So you're suggesting waiving fees on garage?
Maybe.
Sales for May? So we would, we'd have a garage sale month?
Yeah, the great garage sale month.
That's kind of fun.
Or maybe June.
Or maybe June.
We have to wait till June.
Yeah, we have to determine all the social distancing, right?
Right, we're going to have another spike because we.
So, so I wouldn't be a good manager if I didn't remind you that every exception that you make puts us deeper in the hole from the nine to ten million.
And so is that forty thousand, is it, I didn't add that.
It was fifteen, it's fifteen thousand per month, which is about two thousand permits.
No, the whole, the whole license renewal, did you, did you say forty?
I told you that's about forty thousand.
Forty thousand a month?
On this sheet.
On this sheet, yeah.
There's others that are ca- it's about one percent, is that right, of, of our revenues?
Yeah, I, I didn't list every license. I just listed the ones that, uh, were in areas that were maybe more distressed than other areas.
Right.
Uh, our total renewals, I mean, if you're going to, are really closer neighborhood, about two hundred thousand.
Okay.
Uh, but again, there's a lot of those that are, I don't see a routine.
Yeah, like pool license fees. They're a hundred and twenty-five a month, or, or every year.
Right.
So what would be a reasonable estimate then if this doubled in May? So you're, could we get staff to, to figure out what that would look like as a hit to our budget? If, if we encourage, not May, June or whatever, um, if, what, what is the amount? Maybe you know the number off the top of your head, that these usually bring in in a month, if we double it, that would be the hits to the budget, right?
Yeah, it says it right here on the, it's right here on the sheet.
Okay.
Or, or you.
So could you just read off that number for me?
Fifteen thousand per month at two thousand.
Or, or you don't uh, stop any garage sale permit fees for the rest of the year, you just let June be a free month? Cause right now we limited it to two a year, right?
Yes.
Garage sale, so keep that in play. And if you want to do two a year, you still pay for those two a year, but maybe one month is free, just as a way to say, hey, we understand you may have a lot of extra clutter right now. That way, I mean, granted, there's people that will take advantage of that and do three, but there may be people that, I don't know, just, it's more of a uh, positive attitude opportunity than a solving a budget crisis here. And I know it's small potatoes, um, but I just had that epiphany over the weekend.
And, and Mark, when this is around two thousand each month, is that an, is that averaged out over the entire year?
No, that's just during our active.
Okay, so that's just the active, okay.
Got it.
All right, so it would still be about two thousand a month unless we got this kind of up surge, yeah.
So you're, it's about a fifteen thousand dollar hit is what you're saying, if June becomes the free month?
If we do the free month, it might be like thirty thousand if, if everyone waits till June. Like if we double it, it would be a conservative estimate. Am I wrong?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand is what it's listed if, if behavior didn't alter, if there's no elixation and behavior.
Right, exactly.
So to double it would be the conservative way?
Yeah.
Elix- elixticity, I mean, yeah.
That's four thousand garage sales in a month.
Sounds like the best month ever. Um.
Well, that, that might be, so I, I know the mayor had proposed a, what was it, Christmas in April?
So the Christmas in April, that's what we're proposing now on, online. And the idea is to push because our small businesses are suffering, uh, the ones, you know, who make Wichita unique. Um, we have, uh, influenced a young person who created, uh, on her own and then influenced her to add other businesses, a website that lists all of these small businesses and link. a website that lists all of these small businesses and links to their, to buy gift certificates and such. So the, the push that I'm doing now, and I would hope that people would help me with this, is to have those of us who are able to, who are still working, to go on and buy gifts that we can give away in a holiday or utilize later, because right now our small businesses are the ones suffering the most. They don't have the large accounts to, you know, for cash flow to, or to supplement the cash flow. So, so yeah, that's what we're doing now, right?
Well, to your idea and the comment that Councilman, Councilmember Fry suggested, I know we're, we are trying to determine whether or not we may defer or not even ask for this, but maybe we choose that month. So maybe it is June as not only helping our small businesses recover, the ones who are having to pay these fees, and maybe that's a free month just in general to help them out as we're coming out of this.
So we could also advertise it. You're saying that this is almost like a personal, not stimulus, but opportunity to, if you make it a big community yard sale event, it encourages people to be able to, to make, make money off of.
Yeah, so the Councilmember Fry's point, so garage sales, those are free and people are camped out with stuff they want to get rid of. That's a big help. Looking at the rest of this list, food trucks who may be suffering right now, I mean, that, that one month, that is the first month of summer anyway, so maybe just Christmas in the summer or whatever it looks like. But maybe the city is trying to do our part at that point, reducing fees or not requiring them for all or most of these, which I think would be a big help.
We have someone with a doctorate in marketing, so maybe we can come up with something better than the Christmas theme, but, you know, maybe we could do it. But yeah, I get what you're saying, I, I think that would be pretty cool.
And, and I'm not opposed to it, I'm just gonna ask a question I don't have the answer to, right? Okay, so I, I like it and I think it sounds great, and I think it sounds like a, a good gesture for our community and to show that we care and we're listening and we're empathetic. But ultimately, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, staff is recommending that we not do any waiving of fees because we gotta figure out a way to keep our revenue as high as we can and decrease expenses. And what we're talking about is decreasing our revenue more by waiving these.
Right, that's why we suggested deferral, that if we could collect the money in 2020 but recognize the financial straits that people are in right now, they could continue under their licensing, but we just wouldn't collect any revenues until whatever you say, if it's a two-month delay, a three-month delay. But that way we know that we're protected. Again, you know, the, you know the numbers, Mark went over them. When, when eighty percent of your budget is for essential services and eighty percent roughly of our expenses or personnel, you know, if, if we, if we voluntarily give up more revenue, that just is gonna make all of our jobs a lot harder when we try to figure out where we're coming out of the backend of this.
No, I get that, but I'm worried about some of these places not even being able to reopen, right? And if, and if a license fee is one of those things that they have to do, I mean, I, it shouldn't make or break a business.
Yeah.
I get that, but.
Just to make sure that I understand this, so the recommendation is to delay the fee payments, but that would mean, and, and recover those sometime in 2020. So we put them up on some sort of a payment structure or?
Basically how it would work. We haven't worked on the mechanism.
Yeah.
Or it could be automatic if your renewal was in May, then the payment is due by September or something.
Right, like a six-month thing, got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think at a minimum, the deferral is the right thing to do. Give them time to get their finances and their revenue back up.
Yeah. I'm worried about them getting hit with this, that's why I'm asking, can they stretch that out? Because I'd hate for them to not pay, not pay, and all of a sudden, boom, they have to pay, you know, a big, to them, a big fee, so.
And just another thought, again, I'm not opposed to it, but the, I hate to say Christmas, the holidays in April idea, I mean, I think it sounds interesting, but in some ways we're just asking people to spend, and I know people need the revenue now, but then they won't have the robust revenue that they depend on in December, right? I mean, we're just kind of replacing one with the other, I mean, so, yeah.
So I, I like, I know that this, this gives us a hit if we just said no to everything, but maybe a combination of both. So if we, if we say deferral and you don't have to pay what you normally would until September or October, and folks can figure out that plan, but take away one month of that. So we're still collecting it, we just will miss a month of revenue.
We give them one?
Yeah.
So we, we, what you're saying is for 2020, we reduce our license fee that's due by the equivalent of one-twelfth?
Right.
Right.
But then we gotta find the money somewhere else to make up for that one-twelfth and the nine million.
Yeah.
If I could kind of add, just from a, I know this is way in the weeds, from a tactical standpoint, one challenge we might have is, we already have people that have extended their licenses in April, and so you could have some equity challenges if you waive or defer fees for people in April, and then you have other businesses that have already renewed for April and already paid their fee. In other words, it's just something to think about.
What if we put it out, what if we said June was the month, or what, have we picked it far enough in advance? Would that help?
Yeah, but some of these companies have been struggling already in April and March, so unless you were able to?
Yeah.
Yeah, where, where do you cut it off? Is it January? Is, you know?
Yeah, I know, that's gonna be.
When did some of these start seeing the effects? It was really March, not really, it didn't really affect January and February business. It was March when it started hitting. So for those people that were March and April, do they get a, a one-twelfth in 2021?
Right, we are creating an administrative nightmare here.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's.
You know what, I think you're, it's the intention, and I know that if, if someone comes to us and has a concern, we can always work through it with them, but I, you're not gonna be able to do a perfect one-size-fits-all.
Right.
Yeah.
But if, if the idea is that we reduce our fees in 2020 by one-twelfth and then collect two, three months down the road, something like that, some start collections this summer.
Yeah, or you just do it, yeah.
I think I know where you want to go. Let us play around with it to see what I can put together that's administratively?
Manageable?
Manageable, yeah.
I want to just clarify this, Mark. So did, if I, did I understand this right? Our total licenses, they're not all on here, but our total license collection is about two hundred thousand a month? Okay.
In general charges, ma'am?
Okay.
He didn't put pool licenses on here.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was monthly and not.
So you're talking about the equivalent of a two hundred thousand dollar?
Hit.
Hit.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll refine this and bring this back for you.
Because it, it seems like it would make sense then on how long to correlate the, the delays in fees or the forgiveness of fees with the amount of months that they can't be in operation because of the COVID, right? Like that seems like a logical way to stimulate these small businesses and also kind of give them that encouragement. Because they're suffering right now, and, you know, the idea of going out a full year, like if, if we correlate that with, let's say we're, we have two to three months of staying in, that's, we can objectively show this has affected your business, then we give them two to three months of licensing. I mean, that, that's something I think we should be considering, because that at least, not only does that give us some type of precedence, but also, or something to base this off of, but also it, it's, it, it seems a bit like a medium where it's more purposeful, I think, than just kind of throwing out there, we're gonna do this for six months, or we're gonna do this for a year.
Yeah. Again, if we, if we follow that model, that puts us four hundred to six hundred thousand in the hole, more than what we've already projected.
So then we're gonna have to cut somewhere else.
Yeah, exactly. So I mean, that's the only side, I mean, I, from a, from a business standpoint and what people are going through, I totally understand that, and I, and it's just a matter of how do we make up this hole?
So I'll, I'll challenge slightly with that, where if these businesses don't come back, if the hit that they got, we are still four hundred thousand in the hole, right?
I kind of said that while you were out of the room.
Did you? Okay.
Yeah. The fear that some of these never come back and we lose it completely.
Right, where, you know, it's like, and, and you and I might be of the same mind with this, Councilmember Fry, where, you know, my, my experience in legislature, where it's only a break if that job actually is created. Like when we gave, when we incentivize people to create jobs in businesses, you only lose that tax revenue if that job is actually created, which will also create you tax revenue, which means that, you know, same thing with here, where we only lose this revenue if these people are going to stay in business anyways. But it's reasonable to believe that they will be suffering, and some of them might not come back, but this might be that thread to allow them to come back. So, I think it's something maybe we should be looking into more, maybe staff could do some more economic research on it to see if, you know, are we really gonna still have two hundred thousand a month? Or is it gonna drop to a hundred thousand a month, but we did this, we might be able to maintain it at like two seventy-five a month. So it's an investment in them, which would be an investment in our future revenues.
Well, we also certainly could keep it in the mix, it's because we're gonna have to look at this, everything together and say, okay, what do we, what do we cut, what do we? And so if we left it in there as part of that mix, when we come down to the final decision?
Right, but again, as we're talking.
We could afford that or not afford it.
As we were talking earlier, our single greatest impact for recapturing some of this revenue is the sales tax.
Right, to keep them in business.
Having these places open and being?
I know.
Able to do things. And there's gonna be, again, to use the pun again, there's gonna be a surge. There's gonna be people that are anxious to get out and spend the money.
They're cooped up right now. Well, if they didn't get laid off or lose their job.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, you know, there's gonna be, I mean, everything's gonna be different. It's not like we just switch the light to switch back on.
Right.
And everybody, I mean, a lot of people lost their jobs, or they've been furloughed, or they've taken a pay cut, or, 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 so.
Yeah.
But the situation, yeah, and to that point, the situation's vast, but to also Councilmember Fry's point, and perhaps we could check in this a little more when it comes, when it comes to the budget. Analysis, that, there is a multiplier effect when you have a drinking establishment in place, where the drinking establishment is now creating foot traffic for, you know, the, the mobile food vendor, for the food truck, which is, you know, walking past the massage therapist office where, oh, maybe I'll call that place tomorrow now that I have that on my mind. Like there's a multiplier effect to, to an advanced economy like ours where, you know, keeping what, these things not only does it keep Wichita neat, but also like they, they interplay in a complex way within our mature economy, so I think we gotta take that into account as well.
Okay, we'll bring some options back.
Our last thing I'll say related to what you said, I have not studied the economic impact side, but what we are concerned about, we want our businesses to be licensed, as I mentioned, for public safety purposes. So you're exactly right, the last thing we want to do is incentivize them not to redo their license if that creates an economic hardship, because then we lose on the public safety side, so.
The next has to do with the fees and rents. Going back to a question that was asked of me before, that these two examples have to do primarily with the users, that those who are, are housed in our facility, C2, the Symphony Music Theater, that, that's what's referenced in terms of, I think, that thirty-nine hundred dollar first item. And then the other one is, goes, kind of goes to what you were all talking about just a minute ago, and that is the Hyatt owes us, you know, monthly sixteen thousand dollars for the rooms of the promenade, and the, obviously, they're not using those right now. The parking fees, again, parking's down. And then we do have some other rents, some other spaces that people rent from us.
What's the IRB? I don't think that's Institutional Review Board, is it?
Well, that's the Industrial Revenue Board. They, they pay us annually an administrative fee.
Okay, just double checking.
I don't think that this one would be, I know we're trying to deal with this as a category instead of individual, but IRB fees, as Mark said, almost, almost all of those have already been paid, they were paid in December. There's only a straggling, some stragglers or some that were on a different schedule. And these are primarily our, our largest employers, so I, I'm not sure that there, that anyone's asking for significant relief in that regard. But we have heard from people that owe us on parking fees and on rents.
So if I understand the parking fees, Old Town paragraph, so since those businesses are shut down, there's really not a, a loss there because nobody's using it?
No, they pay us, period.
Oh, okay. So they're paying for it and nobody's using it?
Right.
But there's less maintenance costs associated with it, they're not, because that, part of those fees go to help clean it and keep them?
And infrastructure later.
Are they still getting those services to the same level as they normally are, getting the furloughs?
Yeah. Yeah, because we, that's a contract, most of it's on contract with Parking Inc.
There's no way for that contract on hold, extend it out a few months, we put it on hold for two months. What if we spending money to cleats parking lots that no one's using?
Yeah, it probably would reduce the service level, I would look at that, because you still are gonna have trash and people that do things in garages.
I, I have questions about Century Two. So the Convention Center rent, rents, this, these are, is this like music theater?
Yes, ma'am.
And those, okay. And right now, even though those people, they have a lease with us, we've kicked them out, right?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, they're not operating.
Well, I know they're not operating, but we've also made them leave that building because of what we're using that building for.
The ambulances.
So even if they wanted to be in there working, which they're not supposed to be doing. Okay, and then meeting room rentals, this is, he rents promenade area.
That's the connecting room.
Oh, and this is, yeah, and this is, we rent it to the Hyatt and they?
They rent it from us.
And they, and then they collect.
Right.
They charge people, right, so.
They program it.
Yeah.
They lease it, but they rent from us.
And I was telling Brian, I, I don't know if the Hyatt's closed, but I know that, I think it is, their garage is totally locked up.
They are technically not closed, or else they'll lose some grandfather permits that they have, but they are not accepting business.
Okay, so they, people just have to park somewhere else if they would happen to?
My understanding, yeah, there is, they found some gray area that they have to stay in.
Okay.
That's something to do with?
But they're certainly not renting the promenade out.
Not that I, no, not, they're not accepting business, my understanding, but there might be some confusion if you want to buy there right now.
Are these all the fees and rents, or are there more?
Uh, these are all the ones that?
These are all the ones, okay.
Front areas in which you characterize.
This isn't like licenses where we have, okay, all right.
And again, some of these, we might be able to recapture if and when they reschedule some of their things, right? Especially as the Convention Center stuff.
Yeah, we won't, it's, it's gonna be a very slow ramp up in terms of Convention Center, for instance.
Some, most of them are just canceled for the year and looking towards twenty-one.
Right.
Yeah, so it'd just be the promenade and really?
Yeah.
That's not. Well, you know, we are, so here's a thought, and staff's probably already thought of this, but one thing is that they are still getting some services from the city, right? We're still cleaning parking lots and parking garages, and we're, and they've still got, even in the Convention Center rents, even though they can't use the building, their stuff is there, we haven't kicked them out. We could look at maybe not totally eliminating them, but, but reducing their fees to, and I don't know what that is, but I'd let staff look at that, I don't know. I'm not hearing a hearty like, yeah, let's do that, so maybe not.
I don't know, we have much other choice.
If you want, I mean, if that's the direction you want us to go, it's, I mean, I think some of this is gonna be case by case.
Yeah.
Because we also have some space that we rent for retail use in our garages.
Yeah.
And most of those have been shut down. So, you know, what are tenants, what are landlords doing with tenants right now, right? It's, do you defer those payments, do you collect part of them? I was reminded by staff, you know, the reason that the, those that are in C2 are out of their spaces is because of the county order. of their spaces is because of the county order, we didn't do, start cleaning in the building until after the county order.
That's true.
Right? So, it's... If you're right, so, guess with the general guidance, if, if they're not using the space, if they're not able to utilize the space now, should we, if, do you want us to work out some kind of discount for the rent during this period of time, until things start to come back?
I'd like to see that.
I mean, they're gonna wanna be back in those spaces, I would think, so I think-
Yeah.
-that is something we would want to do, to make sure they do come back.
I'm supportive.
What do you think, Jeff?
Who are the users?
Music, yeah, I think music theater, and I'm sorry, I had, I had a list, but most of them are relatively small, but they're music theater, Henry Helgerson has a presence down there, of course, and I don't recall, I apologize, but-
Symphony.
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 So music theater.
Yeah, I would agree, if they've been mandated to take in form, then we need to offer some-
Yeah, and I think, you know, a lot of them are trying to recover their season, everybody's now pushing us for dates.
They're not, yeah.
You know, and they're actually bumping up against each other, so, um, so that's, we'll, we'll work on that. And then we have some retailers in, on the first floor of Old Town Garage, um, so, and I think all of those are closed, if I remember right.
And then over at the Transit Center, not the, you know, across from the, the parking garage one.
Next to the Henrys, or the-
Yeah, yeah.
The reason I ask about the users is to make sure it would be someone actively using the facility right now.
Yeah.
Because somebody had a twelve-month lease, but they were really only using it for a season, of course.
Yeah.
No, I think everybody we're talking about rents and uses it for twelve months.
Yeah. And, and then I, I would add the caveat that you talked about the IRB administration fees, I'm not sure that we need to-
Yeah.
-do anything with those.
I, I would recommend that we not do anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll bring back to you some thoughts on a discount on the rental of our space, okay?
Okay.
And then the last piece of this is if we'd have permission from you to go ahead and try to negotiate extensions of contracts, um, provided we can get favorable financial terms for extensions. We normally would try to extend at the existing terms.
And the, the banking services, those all go out to RFP, too, right?
Yep.
And so that's why it's additional time suck right now.
Yeah.
Because it makes it so much more difficult to do that when everyone's, yeah.
So I guess there's one question for me, uh, are all of these contractees performing well, or is there anyone who's not that we would be extending?
That's good.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Good catch.
We'll, um, I'll go back to staff, um, and that's a good, that would be great guidance for us. If we're having performance problems, we don't, obviously don't wanna extend us for a year. Um, so if you're okay with the extension, as long as there's no performance issues, then, um, that's good.
I am. I just wanna make sure it's not bad service.
That's a good question.
It's a very good catch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that helps us, uh, with this first step, uh, on tactical issues, and as I said, we'll, again, bring CIP back to you at the next retreat. So, we just wanted to set the stage a little bit for longer-term, um, considerations, and these are things that we'll probably talk about at the end of April, at the third retreat, or early May. And we may push that back into early May a little bit, so we have a better idea on some revenues and how they're coming in. But Mark, if you wanna just kind of briefly get us through that?
Uh, just briefly, so let's broaden our focus more to the strategic side. Uh, what, what do things look like, uh, twelve months, twenty-four months, thirty-six months down the road, and what do we need to do to prepare for those? Uh, so let me outline our strategic budget process, this'll be a refresher for some of you, I, I know, uh, but we'll use revenues expenditure benchmarks to kind of provide a guide, uh, for our strategic options. As you know, our city budget is based on service prioritization and is based on performance management. I think both those models will serve you very well as we go into the strategic adjustment phase, if those are necessary. Uh, and, uh, reminder of how we prioritize our services, everything we do is based on the City Council mission statement, uh, which I put here, so we want to align everything we do, uh, with these, uh, four areas, we wanna keep Wichita safe, grow our economy, build dependable infrastructure, and provide conditions for living well, and we wanna do that as an exceptionally well-run city. So we wanna consider those, uh, that, that mission and those goals in, in our strategic alignment discussions. Uh, you may recall, in two thousand eight, we segregated services between untouchable and touchable. Again, that was an exercise designed to kind of try to provide guidance, uh, in times like this, as to which areas we viewed as untouchable, or which areas the City Council viewed as untouchable. I think that'll serve you very well. Uh, and finally, our budget process, as we talked about, was designed around the process of trying to pursue excellence in a focused number of priority areas, rather than just trying to do kind of okay in a lot of areas. And I think, uh, we've set up pretty well to try to do that over the last couple of years, and I think that will, uh, serve us well as we go into the strategic alignment phase. Uh, finally, I remind you, we have a performance management system, performance measurement system, uh, which helps us in transparency, it helps us show what taxpayer dollars provide in terms of services, takes our inputs, our dollars, and shows what outputs we receive. Uh, that is a very, I think, beneficial tool for, uh, for the strategic alignment process, again, for transparency purposes. Uh, if resources are allocated, it'll give you an idea of what outputs will either be increased or decreased. And finally, over the last several years, we've continued to review our operating strategies, uh, to enhance efficiency and reduce costs. Obviously, that process will continue, if not intensify, uh, but we've done some things there that I think will, will benefit us in the future. Uh, so that's a super high-level quick overview on strategic alignment, as the manager said, I'm sure we'll get into that more into the future. Yes, ma'am?
Mark, could I ask a quick question? I know two of us were not here in two thousand and eighteen, could we, I can pretty much guess what it is, but could we get that prepared list of untouchable services?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll do, yeah, we can get that out. It, it's pretty extensive, and we're gonna wanna revisit that, because I, I think there are untouchables on that list that we're gonna have to reconsider.
Touching.
It might be touching.
Given the, yeah.
Touching the untouchables.
But only from a six-foot distance.
Correct, that's right.
With a six-foot pole.
It'll be a, yeah, cyber touch or something, but virtual touch. Um, but let's, again, I think the most immediate concern is CIP, right? So we can, we don't get, we don't box ourselves into a corner, um, on projects, and then start talking about the, I'd like to, if it's okay with you, I'd like to start at the higher level discussions first, if, and that's why the touchables and untouchables, and then see how that translates into decision packages for you going forward.
Thanks, ma'am.
Uh, just in summary, and I'll be brief, because a lot of these, I beat a lot of these dead horses already, uh, but could have a significant impact on the General Fund and Goal Fund in particular. Uh, Debt Service and Transit Guest Tax Fund, we believe, will be impacted to a degree. Uh, we've got a, a lot of flows that we're monitoring, and we'll try to provide information to you as to the severity, uh, of the impact, but again, a lot of those, it'll take us a while for us to get the data, because the data will lag. Uh, we've used some tactical adjustments, uh, as the manager just pointed out, uh, you probably are gonna be, reach the point, at some point, where we're gonna have to consider strategic adjustments. Uh, fortunately, we've got a pretty robust system, uh, that I think will serve you well in that effort. And finally, staff are coordinating with Sedgwick County and trying to seek, uh, all available federal support that we can.
So if you wanna end on a good note, we, well, um, the last stimulus bill had money for cities and counties over five hundred thousand, but it also sent money to the states. And some of it is automatically earmarked to the states, and then it's up to the states, uh, the governor and this legislature to determine what funds are available from that pot to go to cities and counties. So we've had some outreach, uh, Marley Carpenter did a little bit of outreach, and then the, uh, more importantly, the league has spent some time in that regard. So there's possibility that there could be some money from that. More importantly, the fourth stimulus package is being discussed, and that is, they're talking about the possibility of earmarking money for cities and counties below, uh, five hundred thousand. So then we would have a direct, um, allocation, and that could help us with some of the revenue loss that we have.
Great. So, um, now that we've done the presentation and into general discussion, I wanna point out, uh, something I think that perhaps the finance department can give us a fiscal note on. Uh, I think it's imperative that moving forward, uh, we look at a policy in which our employees get, um, paid maternity leave. Uh, when I first got here, I found out that we don't have paid maternity leave unless you can utilize your sick and your vacation days. Uh, however, given the situation, uh, we have asked employees to come forward and offer their sick and vacation days, uh, to each other. And the last thing we want, uh, for someone out of good faith, uh, in, in really good spirit, to have given up their, uh, their sick days or their vacation days, find out that they are having a, a child and not have, uh, paid maternity leave. Um, I think that this is an opportunity for us to modernize that. Uh, also, uh, the fact that, you know, if you were to have, uh, uh, an emergency C-section, you really can't just come back to work, and people shouldn't, uh, I think, um, have to choose between having a paycheck and having a child. So if we could, uh, just, because we're, we're assuming all of the paid mater, uh, all the paid vacation days have been used up, uh, what would be the mechanism to supply our employees of what they need?
So just to clarify, so let's say Becky Tuttle works, I don't know, at the library, right, and I donated some of my time, that doesn't mean I donated all, all of it. I mean, I, you have the discretion of how much you want to donate, I'm just clarifying, asking a question, I don't know the answer to, Bob, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So not everybody completely lost all their time, I guess, is what my summary statement is. But, so just to make sure I understand, you're just asking if they will do a financial analysis of that?
No, I would also like us to include that, I think that women should have paid maternity leave overall, and I think that especially if the avenue for them to have had paid maternity leave, uh, was, might have been taken away if they donated those days to someone else. Um, we just had in our meeting, uh, I, I, you know, the manager reported that they were looking for, I think, I think you said twenty-four thousand dollars, but in my head, I thought it was twenty-six thousand dollars, and they were able to get over a hundred thousand dollars due to the generosity of our employees. Um, I think that, you know, we have people who might have done that and have a child without planning, you know, years in advance, or even worse, uh, we have young people who are working here who haven't acquired enough days to have maternity pay, uh, and, you know, if they were to have a child, uh, they wouldn't have that maternity pay. And from my experience as being a dad, not of being someone who had a child, um, the amount of time for maternity pay, actually, for maternity, you know, for, for the recommended amount of time that someone is, is on maternity for the average, actually correlates with whatever this amount of time recommended medically to recover from an emergency C-section. This is not vacation, you know, to use vacation days, uh, for this, I think is bad practice in general, and also particularly in this situation when they might not have those vacation days because they were trying to look out for each other. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to pivot, support our employees, give them something, uh, but also make sure that, uh, working for the city of Wichita allows, you know, allows us, uh, to compete as one of the top cities to work for by modernizing our vacation days, I mean, our maternity leave in general.
So is that something, Bob and Mark, as clearly the experts, is that something that we could get a dollar amount of how much it would, because it would, it would be a fiscal impact to the city? I'm not saying I'm not supportive, but to be able to look at it in its entirety, what would be the fiscal impact for that annually?
Yeah.
Is that something that we could get before we, I mean, I don't think we can just throw it in until we know a little bit more about what the cost would be?
No, I think we should definitely throw it in. The, uh, no matter what, this would be, we want Wichita not only to be the best place to live, work, play, and pray, but we also want it to be the best city to work for in the Midwest, and we know that if we wanna save money, one of the ways to save money is treat your employees right, so you don't have to rehire new people. It costs more money to replace a trained employee than it does, uh, to just give them what they need to be successful. And right now, we're, I'm just asking that we consider an amendment moving forward that gives them the ability to heal, uh, and, you know, to bond with a child after having a child. Like, this is standard westernized, modern economy stuff. So, uh, I, I'm asking not just, and I wanna clarify, not just for what the price tag might be, but also, moving forward, um, a preparation so we can have a vote on that.
Can I ask a clarif, clarifying question, it's-
Of course.
My days of maternity leave are long in my past, unfortunately. Uh, what time period is, I, I don't even know what time period is common these days.
Six weeks.
Is it six weeks?
Six to nine weeks. Traditionally, it's six weeks.
And like I said, it didn't just come out of, yeah, there's a traditional one that, uh, that, that I think is standard, uh, but then there is, uh, and how to pay for that. It correlates, it didn't just come out of the blue, it, the time, I think, is the minimum, actually correlates with the average time that a person needs to heal from an emergency C-section. Like, this isn't, there's physical, medical aspects to why we have maternity leave. Um, and, you know, we're seeing changes in the economy where, you know, we have, uh, where, where other cities have caught up, I think, a little quicker than we have, uh, and I think it's time that we do that, particularly, uh, to not only make Wichita one of the best cities to work for, but also, uh, I think to start that trend, to be in a leadership position where, you know, possibly, uh, other companies who are competing for the same talent that we have could also, will all start off in those type of benefits.
So FMLA prescribes twelve weeks of unpaid leave for new parents, but the average is about ten weeks.
Then-
That's FMLA.
So what do we offer today, nothing?
They use their sick and vacation.
You use your leave, existing leave.
So you get-
So there's no additional leave on top of that, just your, whatever you have-
You acquired. So today, we offer, I, I think, the twelve weeks, because that's required by law, but we don't pay for that, like other employers do, unless you can utilize your vacation and your sick days. And that's a policy decision, I understand that, but there's reason to believe that people have utilized their sick days to look out for each other, given the information that we, we got in, in our meeting from Bob. So this is a chance to replenish those, but as a policy decision, too, and we're trying to attract the best and brightest, uh, particularly women, who are one of the groups who are leaving Wichita more than other groups, um, if you are young and you just started working here, you, you actually don't acquire enough vacation days, um, to go on maternity leave until years after. So, you know, policy-wise, I think that there's a lot of areas that make this, why this makes sense, in my opinion, but-
Average paid is four. I'm seeing average paid is four weeks, so there's, well, there's probably a combination of paid and vacation time to get people through that.
And I just wanna go on record that I'm not saying I'm supportive or not supportive, I'm just asking for information as a public health professional, this is an area that I actually have opinions on, but I just wanna know what the financial repercussions are, because that's what we came into this, and so since this is the first time I've heard of it, I'm not disputing it or agreeing with it, I just need more information to be able to make a solid policy decision, instead of it just kind of being part of a discussion I wasn't anticipating. So again, I'm not saying I make a stand at all, I'm just asking for more information for clarification.
I, I, I really feel like we're getting out of scope, but if we're gonna introduce this, I think we need to look at FMLA, we need to look at, um, the husband, or whatever the other partner is, we need to look at adopting a child. I mean, this is, I wanna look at what all the aircraft companies are for, this is, this is, this is a huge undertaking that I don't think can just be slipped into this conversation.
That's kind of what I'm saying, I just need more information.
So, the reason why I bring this up is because COVID-19 has resulted in our employees, three hundred of them being furloughed, and our other employees requesting, or, or staff and us-
Yeah.
-requesting that they, they give their days up. So it's not the same level playing field as it would have been maybe last year, where, hey, if you were planning on having a child, it makes sense that you use your days. Like, I believe there's probably people who gave up those days, uh, thinking that they wouldn't need them, thinking, hey, I'd rather not go on vacation so that my colleague down a hallway can eat for the next thirty days, um, and then wind up pregnant, you know? And the last thing we ever want is for people to have to choose between having a child and having a paycheck. So I think that, that's why I, I agree with, um, Councilmember Bluebog, that we should actually have a discussion, a, a larger, global discussion. Um, but we're at the end of this, and this is general discussion, this is the time for these type of ideas. I think moving forward, if we're gonna talk about making cuts and adding things to the budget and changing them, I, I just want us to be prepared next time to also have the discussion to support, uh, working families who might have given up their days out of good faith, um, that we make sure we have something in there to, to help them in the future.
I, I think you're absolutely right, it's a- I, I think you're absolutely right in terms of retention of our best and brightest and recruiting new people. If we have the best suite of benefits that we can offer, I think it's something we should definitely look at, so, good idea.
Just to, great conversation, I agree. Um, the, the other thing I, I just want to keep in the forefront is, I believe that folks who are lower income will have a harder time to recover, and when we look at the things that we offer as a city, as we're looking at touchable and untouchable, like our parks and arts and all of that is really important, especially if folks can't afford memberships to some of our other nonprofit partners in the city. So, if we could find ways to make the least amount of cuts in those areas, which typically are, are first, love to see that so that our, our parks can continue to serve our constituents, and, and they still have that quality of life peace that could potentially be cut to fill other areas, but I, I would just like to keep that out in the forefront.
And then I have a, a question about next steps. So, today we got this kind of high level, I mean, we did, we did these few little tactical things, but what's going to happen next? Because we still have eight to ten million dollars.
And actually, today we kind of...
Yeah, and we added to that for you, we didn't help any today, so...
Okay, so, um, we'll definitely, uh, first of all, we'll come back with suggestions on the tactical issues that you talked about today, and then we'll come back also with, um, a CIP discussion immediately. And then the question is, what do we do for the third retreat? And we're going to regroup and talk about that. We're, again, I think this is... And I'm, what I'm thinking is, we'll, we'll bring to you some ideas and recommendations of, in terms of packages. So, we, we know we're going to be short now X million in sales tax, here's your first priority. These are the things that, that are the first cuts that we'll implement to balance twenty twenty. And then we'll have, probably I'd like to get you to, to approve different tiers, and then then either we'll have revenue problems, or we'll get some federal money or other assistance, or our numbers will be off, right? And then that would allow us to, you know, maybe not go into the next tier, or go only into the first two tiers or something.
And, sorry, just to follow up. Yeah, and so then what we'll, we could expect are decision packages like we got last year, that, and, and the year before, that lay out, here's, here's what this means, here's the analysis of that, and what the ramifications are.
Right, but that's why we've got to have that discussion of priorities first.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, this, it feels so much like two thousand nine, and that was an eight-million-dollar cut that we had to make. And at that, at, at that time, we were kind of, I don't know that we had his, we had guiding principles that helped us through it, but until we start to roll up our sleeves, I don't think you understand the trade-offs that are going to be involved. It's, you know, it's, I, we've done a lot in quality of life improvements, because we were trying to cap, catch up for everything that we lost in two thousand nine, ten, and eleven. And a- again, when you're looking at that versus public safety expenses, it gets really difficult. And I, you know, I think what Brandon talked about, Councilmember Johnson, on equity, is it something else? And that was one of our principles, right? At, at the time, was to not hurt those who have the least ability to address issues on their own. But, you know, what that looks like, whether, you know, we mow the grass as much versus, you know...
Right, and libraries and pools and all of that.
Those are all the hard decisions.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to do, thank Mark and Bob both for pulling this together. This is very difficult fortune teller stuff, right? I mean, we don't know, uh, you guys did a great overview, that high level. It's allowed us to all participate and contribute to this dialogue, and we've had good discussion, um, good ideas, and I hope that we all continue to do that as we go through phase two and phase three. We're not going to solve all this today, uh, we're not going to solve it all next week or next month. It's going to take all of us working together, and I appreciate everyone participating. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate the conversation.
Yeah, no.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks for buying lunch.
You're welcome, yeah. Yeah, it's, I paid for it, so go ahead and eat.
It's like a, it's like a bomb over there.
That's right.